Uh, yeah, my sure do, uh, hold down the button, turn your microphones on, guys.
Please.
They should have some fresh batteries in. That's all right. That's right, that's right. Thanks for the wall. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna call this Harrison County Commission Meeting Order, November eighth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. here at Harrison County Courthouse. I'll call this meeting order at this time. We're going to ask, uh, Brother David, you in the house? You and your, uh, you and your church family? Don't mind, come on up, I'm gonna introduce you guys. You got a crew for us here, don't you? Uh, ladies and gentlemen, this is, uh, Pastor David Beeson from First Pentecostal Church here in Lexington. He, uh, every month, first workday of the month, pastors meet here and they pray for the county, kinda keep things up. This past month, I asked the, uh, pastors to, uh, rotate, come here to our county commission meeting to, uh, uh, lead us in prayer and a pledge of allegiance. So, uh, Brother, Brother Dave, thank you, guys, and your, uh, youth for coming here tonight, really appreciate it.
This is our, some of our students from Lexington Christian Academy. This is our principal, Crystal Rittenbaker, and one of our teachers, Emily Board.
Nice to meet you, guys. All right, well, uh, if you don't mind, go ahead and, uh, lead us in prayer, and we'll do the pledges immediately.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight with hearts that are thankful. As we come into this Thanksgiving month, we first of all, wanna thank you for this day. Thank you, Lord, for the beautiful day that we've enjoyed. Thank you for Election Day. Thank you for the democracy of our nation. And, Lord, today, we pray that you would help our land, that you would bring healing to the division. And we pray, oh, Lord, that it would start right here, right here in our home, right here in the seat of our county. We pray, Lord, that your unity, the spirit of unity, would just prevail among us. And, Lord, we, we also pray for our veterans during this week, this being Veterans Day coming up, that you would be with every one of them, bless them, help them. And tonight, uh, we ask that you would just give wisdom that is needed as decisions are made. We ask your help and your blessing on all of our commissioners, our leaders, our mayor, and, Lord, on their families and their homes. Be with them in a special way. Help us, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and living, just as our own.
All right, thank you, uh, Brother David, appreciate you, guys, and thank you for, uh, joining us for us tonight, thank you. You got blessed with a stay, you're free to go when you come up to. Yes, sir. All right. Uh, speaking of this, uh, Veterans Day approach, is there any veterans in here in, in the house tonight? If y'all, or if you don't mind, stand up, let's, uh, let's honor you. All right, thank you for guys for your service. All right, uh, Secretary, you might call the robe, please.
Jeff James?
Here.
William Carter?
Here.
Tommy Page?
Here.
Tommy Stigall?
Here.
Todd Beecham?
Here.
Aaron Woods?
Here.
Mac Manus?
Here.
Luke Stambul?
Here.
Terry Allen?
Here.
Randall King?
Here.
Andy Anderson?
Here.
Jack Johnson?
Here.
Nick Peterson?
Here.
Joe Ross?
Here.
All right. Obviously, have a forum, uh, number four on the, uh, agenda, discussed approved October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two Commission Meeting Minutes. Uh, in addition, uh, we have some minutes from June two thousand twenty-seven Commission Meeting Minutes. We'll, uh, we're gonna adapt the minutes, but I get a, uh, motion to approve the October eleventh min- minute.
It's due.
Yes. On what word?
Adam, Adam six.
Adam six. So, you did? All right, we'll, uh, add as noted. Make that change, thank you. And the three, all right, any other changes? Get a motion to accept?
I don't think.
Joe Ross, second by Todd Beecham, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, the June twenty-seventh meeting, uh, it came up, uh, whether or not the, uh, legality, uh, because some commissioners wasn't here, we sent out the C T A S. C T A S recommended if you wasn't here, you can just remain silent, if you was, you can speak up. So, on the June twenty-seventh meetings, if we can remember that far back, kinda get a motion to accept. Terry Allen made a motion, Todd Beecham second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, next item of, uh, business is number six, discuss approved public records request policy. Um, reviewing our records, and, uh, July two thousand eighteen, Tennessee State law passed a, uh, law that all counties had to have a policy, uh, in place. It's two thousand twenty-two, we still don't have one. So, um, I talked with our, uh, county attorney, we adopted the, uh, policy that the state has set now. Uh, we're, we can get into compliance and get a motion and a second for discussion. Joe Ross, you got a motion?
I see.
All right, got a second? Any discussion? Okay, so that, is that gonna be across the board for everybody in the state when they call? You say no cost?
I'm just saying, I think that we should charge our own fees in the county.
Why not?
I agree, because it already, it's already paid for. The paper's paid for, the heat's paid for, the labor's paid for. And you guys really, this county's tax pay is already paid for this. If, uh, somebody asks for, uh, coffee, something, you know, we require children, that's why, if they live here, you can find them, they don't charge them.
Question I have on that, as far as the legal side of it, would there be discrimination since this is a state policy that someone from another county?
I'd have to look further in the policy, considering the number of, uh, fair for that question, but I'm just, um.
Yeah. I know that inside the policy, I guess that's a discretion of the coordinator, as far as whether to charge or not.
I'll talk again about, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Don't talk again, I don't see an issue with it, but that's without having a veil, a little lever.
Sure.
Somewhere in the policy, it says you can't charge.
I, I, I do think y'all have that discretion, but again, that's without careful consideration.
In place, we have the charges. I don't know if it, I don't know what's, that's how I put it.
So, is, is that a motion that you wanna take, uh, for Harrison County, no fee?
Yes.
To change this, is that a motion that?
Or Jeffy?
Before we get into discussion?
Yes, I make that motion if it comes out from Harrison.
There we go. Hold on, hold on, hold on. That motion, yeah, so we got a motion, second discussion right now.
Can I make a amendment to the motion?
After that?
I'd like to make a amendment to the motion, that residents of Harrison County don't pay anything. And that was on a conversation, I think.
We got a motion on the floor, we either have to rescind that motion or vote on the motion.
No, I don't think so. Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Call the robe.
We're voting on the state's policy, but.
As stated.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Randall King?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Jack Johnson?
No.
Nick Peterson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yeah.
Jeff James?
No.
William Carter?
No.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tommy Stigall?
Yes.
Todd Beecham?
Yes.
Aaron Woods?
Yes.
Mac Manus?
Yes.
Luke Stambul?
Yes.
All right, so we got?
Now, I'm like, gotta make a motion now that we abandon that to charge, not charge anybody in Harrison County?
We got a motion to amend, not to charge anybody in Harrison County. There's a second.
It's paid for, Eric.
Oh, we gotta give a second before we get into discussion. Got a second, now we go into discussion.
Yeah, it's still paid for. You're paying for it, when you pay your taxes every year, that's, that's what part of, part of your taxes go for, planting, buying, that paper, the heat, paying salaries. And I think y'all are reasonable, a thousand copies, we could put a limit on that. And if you want to, I'll say, not charge Harrison County.
I would agree with the limit. I agree that we shouldn't charge them.
More than twenty-five?
If somebody come in like that, abuse it, it's different. You know, I know it's paid for, but if everybody in this county come in with a thousand copies, it would over our system, uh, global system, I mean, let's be reasonable, I understand. You know, it's just like, I don't believe in charging us all the way, and so I can't go to that. But, uh, we have reasonable constraints on how we do stuff with that, too.
But what?
Maybe we should talk to some of them.
Let me rescind that motion and say, you, you second, yeah. I'd like to rescind that motion and say, not charge Harrison County, but it's, it's hard to put a limit on it, 'cause what if somebody wants a copy of the policy, and it's got thirty-six or forty, or whatever?
I don't know how, I don't know how to.
Just say they don't pay for anything, anything over twenty-five pages, they can start having to pay for it.
We just say who make it the discretion, who's making the copy?
It's already on there, like, dude.
So long we just wait a month?
It's already in discretion.
So, if it's already in the discretion, if you come here and want five copies, then, hey, it's free, go, y'all have a nice day.
I think it would be important, yeah.
I, I, I agree, it's, I mean, it's definitely considered all that, it's already got, it's, it's, why not? Dog, dog.
Right, so that's already.
I would draw on that motion.
We draw the motion. All right, next item of business, number seven, discuss approve the budget amendment for border education, following one forty-one and one forty-four. Uh, it's a cash contribution to the transportation fund. Uh, they did receive in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, transferred, uh, similar in a hundred thousand. It's passed the border education, with the budget committee, looking for a motion to approve. Terry Allen made a motion, a second. All right, got a second, Tommy Page? Uh, call the robe.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Jack Johnson?
Yes.
Nick Peterson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yes.
Jeff James?
Yes.
William Carter?
Yes.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tommy Stigall?
Yes.
Todd Beecham?
Yes.
Aaron Woods?
Yes.
Mac Manus?
Yes.
Luke Stambul?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
All right.
Randall King?
I didn't get kicked out, even though.
All right. Let's see here. On that, also on that same, on that same, uh, request for a budget limit from one-on-one, uh, to, um, yeah, that would follow the same thing for county government fund. Uh, the one-on-one fund, uh, we received a T H D A grant, um, from Southwest Human Resources Agency. We've been paying out them funds on, uh, some homes that we've been rebuilding. Uh, we need to replenish our, uh, account. I'm requesting, uh, uh, money to go from our general fund, uh, our thirty-nine-hundred undesignated fund over to the general fund. Passed the budget committee, looking for approval from the full commission. Sir? We're on, uh,
Number eight.
Uh, the top, it says, yes, on number eight. At the top of the page, it's got a date, eleven eighth, two thousand twenty-two, you'll see the funds, one forty-one and one forty-four. Underneath that, it's got fund one-on-one, it'll be a separate fund. Looking for a motion to approve. Mac Manus? A motion, second, Joe Ross? Call the robe.
Jack Johnson?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Nick Peterson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yeah.
Jeff James?
Yes.
William Carter?
Yes.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tommy Stigall?
Yes.
Todd Beecham?
Yes.
Aaron Woods?
Yes.
Mac Manus?
Yes.
Luke Stambul?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Randall King?
Yep.
All right, the, discuss and approve, uh, transfer from Harrison County Government Fund, one twenty-seven, this is the ARPA fund. The, uh, budget committee met last week and had some items on request, uh, Mr. Steve Bender, you might come in up, in case they have. All right, Steve, you had a request, uh, out of, I guess, from the community about paying two roads, you wanna break the commission on that?
Well, we do, we had several, several requests, uh, one in the south end, very far south, the Old Rigging Road. Anyone that's been down it, they can plainly see it's in horrible condition. A little over four miles long, I believe. And it just takes a huge amount of money now to pave these roads, that, that my budget cannot withstand. And we've asked to, I believe some of the ARPA money was initially set aside for some infrastructure work to start with. So, I went ahead and asked for this. And we have a road in the northernmost section of the county, which is Ruahama Road. It connects a lot of churches to the community up there, a lot of people traveling. And, um, we've decided to ask for those two first. I have a list prepared of about six, seven roads scattered throughout the county. I picked the worst ones from each community that I could think of, and that's what I'm asking for. But tonight, we're only asking for the two.
Are the asphalt plants still open, Steve?
The asphalt plants aren't still open. The state will allow us to pave the December fifteenth, if the temperature provides, so.
You're paving your people, or?
It's gonna be contracted.
Contracted?
Contracted. We, we run bids in May, June, and we already have a bid for asphalt laid in place, or picked up at the plant.
How much is it?
Hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton, laid in place.
How much is that gonna be?
It's a thousand tons of the mile, so it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, my, six hundred and forty-five thousand for Old Rigging, four hundred and fifteen thousand for, um, Ruahama.
What's this, six twenty-five million we got right here, is that just for one yard?
That's Old Rigging.
So, you've got two amendments, there are one for Old Rigging and one for Ruahama.
Oh, the bottom one's for Ruahama. I guess we're cheaper contracted that, we can do it, too.
It's all about the same, um, they'll lay it, it costs me ninety-five if I pick it up the plant. We have to utilize three-fourths of our labor to do this job.
You got that equipment, too?
We can do it, I believe they do a little bit better job, because they do it every day. Like asphalt, I'm saying.
Who will give the bid?
Earl Payton got the bid in June. That's laid in place.
Are they able to start?
They are assuring me that they can start by the end of the week if we receive funding.
I have a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
I'm quick, I saw Joe Ross over there first, and we're gonna get Joe, and I got Todd. Can we do these votes in the, sir, can we approve both these at the same time?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll approve them both together, okay.
Now, they can specify my motions for both roads?
Yes.
I won't specify them, or I won't make a motion if we do both of the rounds.
All right, any discussion? Call the robe.
Mac Manus?
Yes.
Luke Stambul?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Randall King?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Jack Johnson?
Yeah.
Nick Peterson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yeah.
Jeff James?
Yes.
William Carter?
Yes.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tommy Stigall?
Yes.
Todd Beecham?
Yes.
Aaron Woods?
Yeah.
My motion carried, thank, thank you. So, you're gonna start in the morning?
Yes.
I'm good enough, I'm good. No pressure, no pressure. All right, so, uh, the next item of the business is a solid waste roll-off truck. Many of you know that we've extended our contract with Waste Management for a year back in June. Um, when we extended it, raised our solid waste cost up to about seventy-five dollars a ton for, uh, for disposal. Um, before you know it, I've got a, uh, purchase agreement with River City for a, uh, new Kenworth, I'm sorry, Freightliner, new Freightliner truck. It's cost a hundred ninety-seven thousand. I'd like for this to be purchased for our solid waste, where we can start hauling our own trash, provide a better service to the county. Um, we get into too much discussion, I'd like to see if I can get a motion in a second.
I got one question before I make a motion.
Okay.
Do we have somebody already there in solid waste with a CD on the, like, registered?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, the budget committee was presented, I guess, thank you, I should have opened it, that's budget committee was presented to them the other night, and, uh, they agreed to move it forward to the full commission.
Are we in discussion now, or?
No, we got motions, second.
I make a motion.
Jack Johnson, a motion. All right, give me a quarter for a second, all right, now discussion.
Now, you're gonna, you're gonna put a list of potential drivers together to kind of man this thing? We're trying to do this to that part of the full, that person?
Yes, yes. Use part-time labor, government list, retired guys, chomping at the bit to get in seats. We do have somebody that's in-house that can do it. Um, but with the savings that we're gonna save nearly thirty dollars a ton on, on the haul, and we do six thousand ton a year, um, it's gonna wash out. Just be, at the end of the day, provide a better service to the county. I know a lot of times, you know, like Blue Goose and, uh, and some other places, and sometimes the bargain, they have to shut down the convenience centers because they're full. And we're at the mercy of Waste Management to come pick it up a day or two later. With this, uh, capability here, we'll be able to go pick it up ourselves and hopefully get some open-top containers, that way, if you live in the county, uh, if you have a commode, or a mattress, or a bag of trash, you can take it to the convenience centers and throw it out, at no additional storage. Long-term plan, we can get into the, to the weeds with it, but, um, providing open-top services to people whose homes have burned. Uh, if they have to do a remodel, we can have open-tops dropped off, and we can do those also. Uh, like Mr. Bender said, during the budget meeting, there are storms, uh, a lot of times, we have a lot of debris out in the county with limbs, stuff in people's yards. We'll be able to drop some of these open-top containers off in certain locations and be able to, uh, really, at the end of the day, it's about providing service to the county. And, uh, this is the way we can do it.
Mike, I have a question, uh, in this contract with Waste Management, it's transportation, or is that contract?
It is.
And we can opt out of that?
We're locked in to that, well, we can opt out with a, uh, a ninety-day opt-out if we wanted to. But with this contract, the truck will get here till June, that's why I presented tonight, where we can have the truck ordered.
Is there a possibility for us to pick up the school system, Jerry Johnson, since we're gonna be in there?
We could, which is something we can, uh, discuss, uh, I did look at the school system, I go by a few of the schools and look at their containers. Um, we'd have to change containers out, obviously, anyway, but Waste Management has front-load containers there. We would have to put a, uh, maybe a twenty, thirty-yard container and, uh, change them out like that. But we can provide that service to the school system as well, at a cheaper rate.
Is there, is there any other piece of equipment that we're gonna have to purchase along with the truck?
That, that, right now, huh? No, if we get into the containers, we would.
Yeah.
That, that's something we can do through budgets.
There, we got our own spurs right now that they're swapping out.
Yes.
We're not using nothing that, what, that Waste Management, I would.
That, we, we own the boxes, we actually have seven, uh, seven open-tops right now, is that right, Mike? So, w- we have the capability to go right now.
How long is our contract with Waste Management?
It ends at July thirtieth. Oh, I'm sorry, June thirtieth is this next, of twenty-three. This'll give us time to get the truck in and start getting, uh, some things lined up.
I will tell you ahead of time, not to step on your toes, but if you don't play Waste Management, tell Mattie right ahead of time, they'll all make a good, which they're talking about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very familiar with them, you're right, yeah.
I've been done at Waste Management.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. Like, Waste Management's not that set with you, time to try to get out of it.
Yeah.
Are we tied into this, I see we're here, we got a two-year buyback. Are we tied into that, or is that just an option we have?
It's an option if we, if we decide to, we, they will buy the truck to us at that set price, guaranteed, and we can purchase a new one if we want to, keep a new fleet, or we can keep this truck, I mean, we're not tied to that, that's just a promise that they'll buy it back at that price, if we choose to.
That's if we keep it in good shape, or they, we have to have all the maintenance done through them, or?
No, so, as long as we have a record, any maintenance we do, and there, there are certain guidelines to come. They wanna seal maintenance law, and if there's any, like, bad damage, they ask us to repair it, or just knock off the price. It's, it's standard across the board, this is a state contract, so. Any other question, sir? All right, call the robe.
Todd Beecham?
Yes.
Aaron Woods?
Yes.
Mac Manus?
Yes.
Luke Stambul?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Randall King?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Jack Johnson?
Yes.
Nick Peterson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yes.
Jeff James?
Yes.
William Carter?
Yes.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tommy Stigall?
Yes.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, nine point three, Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Christie, you have the floor. Uh, Ms. Christie Anderson is our Chamber of Commerce Director. Uh, she's here, Ms. Tossa Johnson is the President of the Chamber. Uh, they have a presentation for you, they came the other night before the budget committee, and it was recommended to bring for you, got, excuse me, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Robert. What we are requesting is a one-time allocation for a two-thousand-square-foot rink. Um, I think it is a not real ice, it does not take electricity.
Um, I think it is a not real ice, it does not take electricity, um, so there'll be none of that, it's self-lubricating panels, we'll get the barriers around it, um, we'll get the, uh, changing area, we'll get a sharpening machine, um, and skating aids to help people who do not know how to skate. Um, and it is, the one time that I'm asking for is thirty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-two. We will have it just for a one-weekend event, it will be from December tenth through January ninth. And with that is what we wanna do is provide, um, an experience when you come to Henderson County for the holidays or for Christmas time. Um, we, um, with this is I have listed a proposed, um, events for the, what we're calling the Festival of the Lights. Um, and that is, was on the third page that you were given. But we would do a kickoff with Lighting of the Tree on the eighth, and some of those may say the ninth, we've had to change that because that is a Thursday night. And December ninth, we'll have the Jackson Symphony, um, uh, Christmas concert at Lexington High School. And then on the eleventh, we would hope to have a soft opening of the rink where we could invite county commissioners and other family members to come to see how it operates. And then the twelfth, during the parade, um, we would like to do the big official ribbon cutting and before the parade starts. Um, and then with that, we would like to go December fourteenth to the eighteenth, there's a whole Christmas on the square event where we would have vendors, like food trucks and other things, and then we would have Santa, hopefully a train. Um, we would have, I'm looking into reindeers and how to rent them, uh, the Grinch, um, hopefully a sleigh for pictures, um, Christmas carolers. Have potential of curling, depending on how we can set up the ice at with some of you guys and our mayor. Um, and then we would wanna do some slides, and then along with that on December fourteenth, um, the Christmas worship service that is down here, that would be at the same time and just add more. Um, and then we would continue another Christmas on the square type event for another weekend right before Christmas, twenty-second to the twenty-third. And then potentially do something on the twenty-fourth, the last night before we, um, close it out for Christmas. And then we can add it back again, um, for New Year's Eve celebrations, because we'll have it for that too. Um, we're also working with the VRWDA to potentially put some lights across the dam, um, and have Santa there one night and some other lights over by the lake. So just really creating a magical experience, um, for not only our families and our county residents, um, but also for people outside of our area. I do believe that we would have people travel for sixty to a hundred miles to see this, and, um, for an example, I can use Aaron for Darden. I mean, people from all over travel to see his event for Christmas lights and drive through his. We are also, um, Shadrack is not coming back this year in Jackson at the, um, Crennes Park. Um, also the Haywood, where everybody used to travel to Haywood to see the other, um, house with the Christmas lights, he's not coming back this year. So we have a great opportunity this year to do this and capture that audience and bring them to our county. Um, I did reach out to another smaller county like ours, um, they are a bit smaller, but, um, they implemented this last year, and they saw a great return on their investment. They said they actually had sixty to a hundred mile people coming and that their revenue increased for their businesses. Um, I think those are kinda things that we could see in our county. Tossa, do you have anything to add to that?
As, as a chamber, we focus on making this a great place to live for our community, and this is a great way we can do that, but also attracting people to come spend their dollars here. And so this is why we're so excited to bring this to the community. I have kids, most of you have kids, this is magical, Christmas is about the magic of the season, uh, people are gonna come from all over for this. It's gonna be an amazing time, and all your boutiques, all your restaurants, everybody is gonna see tax dollar money coming through here that is gonna improve the local shopping, um, that's another huge part of what the chamber does, we promote shop local. And this event, it's a month-long event all through the winter season, all through the holiday season, that is going to drive dollars right into our community. Not going to Savannah, not going to Jackson and all these other towns, it's gonna bring our people right here and other people from our surrounding areas. So we would love your support to make this thing happen.
One more thing is that we are providing the insurance for the event, I didn't put that into the, um, but Chamber will be responsible for that.
I, I reached out to the Harkin County Mayor, uh, with him Friday, and I brought this up, I said, hey man, I said, uh, what kind of revenue have you seen from this mayor? And he said, obviously, you know, that they've seen some local revenue as far as sales tax and things like that, he said, one of the biggest shockers he didn't realize was the, uh, hotel motel tax. I didn't even think about that, he said, that's one of the biggest things that they've seen over the years where people are planning their weekends, coming in and they'll spend the weekend locally in, in the hotel motel. Never even thought about it until, uh, Mayor Davis told me that Friday. Pretty interesting.
I wanna just add that this is a one-time request because we will be self-sufficient as an ongoing event, it's not a one-time, one-and-done thing, it's something we want to make a staple for our community. We will be working with, um, our members and the community to fundraise for, to make this for next year. We're not here asking for money, we wanna create this as a one-time request so we can be self-sufficient to bring it as an ongoing event.
Alright, that is, what I envision of this is an ongoing and making it bigger and better every year. And just gotta need to get this one-time up in the air and going, and that's what we're here asking for.
Okay. We'll get into discussion, we'll, uh, have to have a, a motion in a second.
Got some question.
Is it a question over a motion?
Question. Uh, thinking, how much, do you know how much we have in our tourism fund right now?
Yeah, this will have to come out of the, uh, undesignated, it's funded through originally, we transfer out of that, right? It is, it would come out of our undesignated account and our one-on-one account or general fund, we would transfer it over to the tourism, we would pay that, to the Chamber.
Can I ask you a question? What's our motion, sir?
Relieve the motion for discussion.
Well, before we have a motion, I, I do just wanna say, I think I'm required to, um, Christie is my wife, um, and we're voting on this as a, as a, or if it's gonna be voted on and considered, um, as a, something, it's a community event to help the community and not anything that would, um, give my family any added, added revenue or anything like that, and, um, I'm required to disclose that by law, um, as we vote, just to let everyone know.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I called, uh, over to the city management department in Harkin County, just, I didn't even speak with him, he was in a meeting, but I, I spoke with the girls in there and they were really positive about the rain. They said that, well, the best thing they've done, she told me that, that, uh, the citizens are driven by it, so.
It, it grows.
So with that, I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
We got a motion in two seconds, who's gonna play it?
I'll take it.
A motion, second by.
Can I make one? You're a bit surprised, I know, but, um, I live six miles off the highway. And I'll be your patron.
Bad, huh? Six rough miles, huh?
So they will come.
Six rough miles, okay.
Yes, I've been there every year, you, you catch it.
You're playing a reindeer on the lake.
Switching seats.
Now you're making that a four-way.
See, I wonder if you play it one more time, this is a one-time allocation.
One-time allocation, it will fund itself year over year and bigger and better every year, I'm sure.
We have utmost faith, industry, businesses, they're gonna be behind this, we are gonna raise the money and they're gonna be excited to tie their name to what a great event this is gonna be as an ongoing thing. But to get it off the ground, we need to raise the startup funds to make it a continual thing.
I have one question, I know we had talked about one free ticket for each school page five, but still gonna consider that?
Yes, that is in part of the packet of, like, you know, in Henderson County alone, there's five thousand just about, school, just school age children. Um, and we can give one free ticket to every kid in Henderson County schools and still be able to be profitable based upon the numbers. If they bring an adult, an adult, you know, and we need three thousand at ten dollars, you know, and that is, I feel like, completely doable, cause, and then within thirty miles from us, we have at least sixteen thousand kids that live there to school age, you know, so we have lots of opportunity, and that was, and the, and the sixteen thousand included Carroll County, um, Parsons area and, um, what was, sorry, and, uh, Madison County. And so I didn't even consider Henderson County, which is, or Chester County, which is right down the road.
You say local kids would be free?
We would give one free pass to every Henderson County student, city and county.
Have y'all spoken with the city about this, because we're going, you're looking, I'm sure they've been closing off the street out here, I guess, Lane Street?
I would.
About that, then tomorrow.
We do, I have, have been invited to come to the, um, city meetings tomorrow at noon, but yes, I would like to during the two event times to shut off the street, but I don't want, I know there's parking, um, but a portion of it, I'll need to.
I've been to Savannah, I know how the traffic situation is.
I'll need to close off one side at least to provide, you know, some safety and stuff, but I still wanna allow for parking for the businesses that are over.
I'd say close off the streets all the way around, put squares in the park, fairgrounds around, we do Savannah walk-in.
The churches have agreed to let us park.
But the police cars won't hit you with, with traffic.
That is my understanding, that they, um, they will, and, um.
I think, no, no objection to closing all the streets around it, it's fire truck access.
Now, we were able to. Um, the proposed location to put it is on the front lawn of the courthouse, we've measured, there is space for it, and, um, coming up to where the elevator is around is where, we're hoping to put the changing station and the paint, all that, and then people can follow the paths.
So this is in front?
Facing the highway.
So, if, if you guys all drove by the other day, me and Christie's out there with a wheel, wheeling things off.
It's really impressive.
Uh, so, I, I will note that the Chamber has bought a fifteen-foot actual Christmas tree, like, it's, it's the real deal, and we're gonna put it on the front lawn of it, don't get any sprinklers. We're gonna put it out, we, we talked to a few folk, a few people about a sled potentially, have a sled brought in on the front, so it's, we're pretty optimistic, pretty excited about, uh, the work that's already been put in, look forward, no pressure at all.
That'll be on the front, most of your activities be on the backside of the courthouse.
You're gonna be spread out, cause your festival's gonna be decorated.
Yes, that's where we want Santa to be, and possibly the Grinch kinda messing around and some other things with vendors and whatnot.
Say something about the train.
Yes, we would like to get the train, it has been, um, at other events in Henderson County before. Um, I haven't got anything finalized because, um.
Obviously.
Obviously, um, but that is, there's one located out in Huntington that is easily rentable for this, and those are things that Chamber will take on from here, um.
I would say we want it all the way around because we want people to shop all the way around.
Yes, and, and I had mentioned also that, um, with this Russell Road and Crest, that every business, um, decorate their business outsides with lights and really make our town, like, crazy to drive through, you know, you can see every part of it, and then we're gonna reward a trophy for the best business, so it, it's everybody that will decorate the, the square. Um, and, but for me, I really think that having the skating rink on the front side to the highway, um, and it does have railings, so we don't have to worry about somebody escaping from it. And the weekends that we do, we have that orange stuff that we could decorate with lights, so no kids escape, that really scares me with those two wild things over there. Um, but we'll, we'll make it safe, um, but having it on the front, you get so much of that traffic that comes through our town that I feel like that that's where it needs to be, where it's visible every day driving down. And the lakes would have been another great location, but you can't see it if you drive through our town, you don't know it's there.
I think, uh, I, I don't know if, if we've talked about it in the city board enough, but I think the plans are to take the money that the city spends and give it to the Chamber.
For the Christmas, yes, sir.
For the Christmas decoration.
Yes, sir, that is my understanding as well.
And that is, and I will talk about that.
Thank you.
So the critics can come for us instead of y'all.
Yes.
Yes.
Any, any more discussion on, any, any question up on this side?
Y'all, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I would like to say I've had several calls today from individuals in my district as well as throughout the county. I've had so many people that are very excited, they're excited that they won't have spending ass money or go to Savannah to do it this year. I think it's gonna bring a lot of private harm around here at this county, and I, I believe, you can't do a bicycle ramp, like, that's made with children, your grandchildren. And I think that we need to pull in, you know, Madison County, the Cager County, Carroll County, if there's, if the lights are not a thing, we need to pull in here. So I think whatever we in this situation, I think this is the best year to go ahead and get this started, and I think, I only have one person that is getting, everybody else that I talked to today was all in with it, so. That's happened, my thoughts are.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so, uh, this time we're gonna call the road. I'm, I'm sorry, Andy, I have something to say.
I, I was just gonna say, I think, I don't tell, she, Christie's very passionate, she feels like this is a home run, and I did obviously nothing to guarantee, but I think she and the Chamber planned good for this, and I think it's something that makes a difference.
Thank you, committee. Alright, call road.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tony Stegall?
Yes.
Todd Beecham?
Yes.
Karen Wood?
Yes.
Nick Magnus?
Yes.
Blake Stample?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Randall King?
Yes.
Andy Anderson?
Yes.
Jack Johnson?
Yes.
Nick Peterson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yes.
Jeff James?
Yes.
William Carter?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, thank y'all so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to commend this Ford, uh, stepping outside of box and doing things a little different than we always done it, uh, it's a pretty exciting time to be here, thank you.
Thank y'all so much, y'all.
It does sound good to have more power than it did.
It does, um, hey, Christie, you gonna start the line?
Yes.
Okay. Sheriff, uh, Sheriff Department's up next, and, uh, ten point one, discuss the approved policy update, chapter twenty-eight, section eight. Sheriff, you have the floor.
Just a minor change, we're adding three days to the administrative staff's holiday. Uh, we're adding President's Day, Columbus Day, and the day after Christmas, that's only for the administrative staff. Uh, the rest of the crew would require a budget amendment to add those, so right now we're just gonna, just gonna do these. Um, with, with the courts being closed and the banks and, uh, the courthouse and finance, there's, there's just no reason to have those people at work and, and I need to work towards getting them on the same holiday schedule as everybody else, it's just a start.
This is the Ministry of Update, right?
Yes.
Policy?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
I saw it.
Check, in a second. Alright, in discussion, all in favor? Me opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Joe T. Wood, uh, if you don't mind, come on up, we're going to get into, Sheriff, you might wanna say, folks.
Yes.
Uh, discuss and approve a, a grant on evidence-based program. Uh, I know there's probably not any Tennessee fans in this room, but if you happen to be listening on, on the radio and listening to the game, you'll notice that some of the advertising commercials on, where they're talking about evidence-based programs, recipients of rates, uh, uh, what's going on this, where people, incarcerated people get out of jail. Uh, the state's throwing a lot of money, uh, at counties and, and, and to the criminal justice system. Lord knows we need the money, we have money we can get right now to help facilitate some things, but at the end of the day, uh, our criminal justice system, uh, uh, in some ways is broken, and the state's making an attempt to fix that. Uh, where re-entry, when you go to jail, starts in booking, and as soon as you get in there, you're starting your re-entry, uh, program. Um, to rebuild lives, families, and, you know, there's a lot of things that goes on in the criminal justice system that, um, needs to be fixed, and the state's making efforts, and, uh, I applaud, uh, uh, Mr. Joe T., uh, in his efforts and work, working with the sheriff, um, with Mr. Jim Perry, you know, also, uh, Maggie, I can't count how many times Maggie's been on conversations about this grant. Um, and the sheriff's got some of his staff here with him that work on this, so I, I think this is awesome, I hope the state's finally doing something right to curb some of this and get some education out, it's all that you guys have before.
Well, I was gonna say this, I don't even know where to start on the number of hours that Joe T. has, has worked on this grant to get it tailored to fit our agency. Uh, and Jim, thank you for providing Joe, uh, you know, it's, it's. You know, it's, it's. This has been the hardest square peg to fit in a round hole that, that I've ever seen, but, but Joe has, has nailed it down. Uh, I'm, I'm going to give you a very brief summary of, of what this grant's going to do beyond helping the inmates. Because at the end of the day, that, that's completely what it's for. But for us to be able to do that, the biggest thing we needed was a person, a employee that was devoted to nothing but classifying these inmates to get them into the program. And get them going in the right direction. We're currently doing that with a staff member who has other responsibilities. And this grant gives us one person that would be devoted to just doing those classifications, speed of the process. And, and truly get this process started at booking. Uh, because the second they walk through that door, we need to be doing something to prepare them to leave those doors. Now, Joe T. can go further into the grant. The grant itself is, is roughly, I'm going to round up nine hundred thousand dollars over a three-year period. It's going to pay for that employee for those three years. It's going to provide some, some lack of base term supplements for employees who are already taking on added responsibility for this grant. We're actually going to be able to reward them uh, for, for taking on extra. Now, there's some other agencies that are going to benefit from this grant that will kind of come through us. Uh, and it's dependent upon the approval of the grant. And, and that's where I'm going to let Joe T. take over and explain what, what that money will, will do and how it can benefit.
I'll have to say that, you know, without leadership and without Sheriff Duke, Chief Stigall, Kim, leadership staff, none of this is possible. Because unless they're willing to do this, there's not any programs. I appreciate the kind words. This is really, since a long time, I guess dealing with grants on the education side. Is really, this is the grant that was approved by the county commission about a year and a half ago. Remember we got the grant, it's about a hundred ninety-eight thousand, put a couple of positions in there that the commission is funding. Continuing on, these programs helped us redo the jail, add some rooms, et cetera. So what the state did was come back and there were thirteen jails that got that initial money. So rather than do, go through a competitive process, they allocated up to a million total over that time. And it's kind of a sliding scale like the sheriff was saying, the funding. But you had to revise your scope so it made it non-competitive. So the money's been allocated, it's there. But it's been a long process to rewrite it, uh, to fit our needs and not what a larger looks like. So also one of the barriers we're finding is, is we've been going through this work. First is fines and fees. Now we've paid up, you know, the other program, about over three hundred thousand dollars. Been paid fines, fees, restitution. And I think Sheriff Duke's got some handouts, uh, child support. So we've then started finding out, even though when you get out and you have money, and some of them are leaving through the R three program or leaving fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. But we're finding that it still goes back to addiction, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent. Not just classify, but also do an assessment. Are they bipolar? We got a mental health person. Employee pathways. We found, we tapped into pathways resources for this. And a halftime, uh, person with Aspore recovery. The data's pretty, pretty glaring, uh, for we are with opioids and, and those pieces. So long story short, this will give a person from Aspore, we're also. Uh, Family Justice Center because it's so needed for wraparound services that just not fines and fees, you know, it's transportation. So there is a, uh, position and a half you'll see in there that just deal with addiction, to work with the pathways person that's there. Uh, there's supplemental, uh, there's training, professional development, there's some money for technology, for the programs that are coming. Um, there is also going to be funded a, a halftime coordinated position to oversee this because it's very difficult. The staff has, has got a full load already and there's a lot of reporting with this grant over three years. So this is three years. It's really to, it starts this fiscal year, FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five. That, they'll take the funds we've got left and the, and the funding, we used that eight seventy, it could be a little less. But you can't exceed funding for the previous grant in this new, oh, million, that's the cap over that, over the period.
So Joe, if I'm not mistaken, this grant, we received the grant eventually and this is a, a secondary.
So the count's still set up. It's a revision of the budget.
So what's this going to cost the county?
Uh, the only. So that'll start a sliding scale, first year about thirty-five hundred, second year probably well before last year, a little under five, so.
Less than fifteen thousand dollars.
Over three years to get probably somewhere between eight hundred and thirty thousand and eight hundred and seventy thousand.
What happens at the third year?
Uh, it's funded, um, you know, in the sustainability piece in the grant, um, we just write in there that, that there's no cloud way to say it. But you're basically saying the funding will, will present this and if available funding's there, but there's no catch. No disclaimer says you will pick this position up or this position up. And the good part is with contracted services, you're really only adding one full-time employee in this grant. So that's the good advantage of doing contracts with Aspore, pathways, uh, you know, in there as well. And, and they're pretty much saying, here's the money, you know, and it's been pretty rigorous process to.
There's no way you're being able to pay anything back. You just don't fill through or something?
No, there's. Sustainability piece in there that just says, we will submit the. Words in there. So there's no fiscal note in there that says in year five, you will pick up twenty-five percent of this, thirty percent now. Mayor said this is, they're, they're seeing there needs to be more money. I think they're just rewarding those early adopters, you know. Once again applaud the sheriff and the commissioner for stepping out because the only, only ones that got to do this was the thirteen first ones. Everybody else had to go through a competitive grant process. So it's not like we're competing with this money. And we can start drawing it down. I mean, it's already been appropriated. So you, you can have a start date. If the commissioner approves it, got a rewrite of the scope coming up. Megan's worked hard at it and uh, try to get that in this week. Then they'll enter into their contract. You can probably start drawing money down December one, as early as that. I don't know if he gets the staff in place, but.
It's been a lot of work. I've been in office less than sixty days and I've probably had more meetings with Joe T. in the past sixty days than I have in the past six years. Uh, Megan's worked hard on it, especially, I applaud Megan also. She, uh, she was handed this and has, has picked up and ran with it. She's done really well, so.
And, and I want to thank, like I said, Chief Stigall, Kim, staff, Brian at the, at the jail have, have worked, you know, very hard.
All right, you guys have heard. Second, Aaron Wood, any discussion?
Probably thirty-two hundred, thirty-five hundred this year.
Sheriff.
Just give, take it out, speak, enter it, but.
I mean. Randall, no, it's not. So Randall, what your question is essentially is right now, we, we would only have to fund probably thirty-five hundred dollars. And we, we, we have that somewhere within his budget. In the next few budget years, we just, I make your doubt, babe. Good question.
I'd just like to, on a personal, in my line of, of my law practice, I work with a lot of families and people that are involved in incarcerated legal issues and in need of treatment so they can get back out and get involved with their families. And there's been a lack, and we talk about it sometimes, like Henderson County doesn't have a recovery facility in how a lot of people get any of these types of services. I think has a potential to really have effect, more positive outcomes for our families that are struggling through these types of issues. And I think it's a great program, community court, Jeff.
That was going to be my question is, how effective are these programs?
We, we've been tracking some of them. It's a great question. Recidivism numbers, of course, that, yeah. You know, they say you have to track the numbers out of about four years to really get a good read, you know, the recidivism. But the individuals that have completely gone through every program available, um, you know, we were at eighty-seven. Anywhere from a twenty-five percent recidivism to forty on a sliding scale, depending on how many programs they've been in. So we've seen some early promise and that's a small sample size. But I think, uh, I think the, the addiction piece and we've all been touched, you know, so many families by that. Is we're having to send them, there's not a bed in Aspore. You know, the teen challenge, we're just really struggling for having somewhere locally and having a connection to more services. And you know, you take the jail, they got eight, you know, you got somebody doing three or four things. You know, they don't know who to call and we're trying to really get into pathways network to better. And we're finding there's some free things and maybe there's some more grants. So, um, the treatment piece has really been, the, the ones we're really seeing, you know, struggle. It's, I'd say ninety percent of those are going back, even if they've been through programs or they're, they're not, they're going right out of jail, not going to anything. They're just out there and that's the ones, but if they're going through transitional housing where they've got steps, you know, that are really lowering the recidivism. But the ones that when they get out, it's kind of there, that's, there's nobody tracking that and there's nobody having, has the time. So we're thinking it's recovery now, Dave, and you made a great point. And the sheriff did, if we can, um, classify them properly the day they're in there and have more treatment while they're there. Uh, then, you know, we're able to provide some of those through the. Still a big gap. That's only touching twenty percent, fifteen, twenty. So you've still got a big group that's out there. And women population is something we've got to kind of stop looking at the women population.
Kim, you want to add something?
Yeah.
I just.
I just got back from a TCI conference. Tennessee Correctional Institute.
Okay.
We have to, the jail runs off the TCI standards for the state. Um, Bob Bass, Will, Robert Kane, all of them was there across the state, governors, secretary. Um, several, I mean, all the counties across Tennessee was there and everybody is pretty much in this for the long haul. Several people have applied for the same grant. If they haven't got the first one, they're applying for the second one. Um, and Carroll County's starting theirs. They're calling us, asking us how we've gotten it going. And they've already set up a TCI summit already for next year. They say it's not going away. They've already reset it for October of next year for another program.
Very good. Well, thank you guys for your work on that. Let me add, you know, we won't stir up nothing. But you know, back going to the agreement we had on the settlement, one of the things that I specifically asked for was the social worker. Uh, it's because I knew this stuff was coming and it's going to just add to their program and I'm pretty excited to, you know, to see what they got going on next month. But this time, guys, you have any more questions?
God, I'd like to thank Joe T. for all the hard work he's put on this. Lost a life and we don't see much. We enjoy the weather, breathe. Thank God we had enough more to rejoice about this year.
All right.
But thank you, Joe.
All right, Virginia, Matt, Secretary Callenbro.
Jeff James?
Yes.
William Carter?
Yes.
Tommy Page?
Yes.
Tony Stigall?
Yes.
Todd Bichman?
Yes.
Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Nick Manis?
Yes.
Blake Stenchel?
Yes.
Terry Allen?
Yes.
Randall King?
Yes.
Amy Anderson?
Yes.
Jack Johnson?
Yes.
Nick Peterson?
Yes.
Joe Ross?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to uh, number eleven, uh, approved with community list, uh, eleven one, eleven two. You have an updated community list in front of you. Talk about the finance real quick. Um, uh, former mayor Danny Hughes is on the finance committee. His uh, son-in-law was elected as a school board superintendent. He and I talked and thought it would be, uh, be on the up and up that he resigned. Uh, as a result, I'd like to nominate Cory Vingel, uh, in his place. Cory's a local guy, grew up here. He works for, uh, one of our local banks in town. In addition, uh, our health and safety committee, uh, that's listed, uh, also on the page. Uh, so I'd like to get a motion and a second on that.
I'll say it.
Jack, on the motion?
I'll say it.
A holiday schedule in front of you. Uh, this is the approval of the two thousand twenty-three holiday schedule for the Henderson County government. Get this in place and go ahead and get it on the calendar for next year. The only one we did add was Juneteenth on number six. Um, I'd like to get a motion in a second. Probably a motion, calling you a second. All right. Cost nothing, no different. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Moving on to notaries, I need you to add, make sure you have Jennifer Spain and Gwen Pope to that list. They may be on there. Uh, that's the list of notaries. Get a motion in a second. What's that? Oh, Jennifer Spain and Gwen Pope. All right, Terry and Blake, all in favor, say aye. All right, moving on, unfinished business. Uh, Robin Powers, you in the house? Oh, yeah, selection. I have Robin, someone from election commission was not here. Um, I've talked with Robin and the election commission. I've talked to, uh, I believe. Potential for the next twenty-four months. Uh, does have a vault, security system, they're remodeling it. They, uh, his board commission is, uh, excited about it and they're looking for a recommendation and, and a motion, second.
I'm making a motion.
Chris made a motion? All right.
Where is the motion, Michael?
Uh, to the lease of four thirty-five West Church Street.
All right, you have to go there.
All right, any discussion? We can extend it month, month after month, uh, until we come up with another option, uh, so we can stay as long as we want. Twenty-four. That's the plan. Any more discussion?
The, the election commission, do you think they support it?
Yes, I've talked to every member on their commission. They're, they're all, they all support. Yes, I've talked to every member on their commission. They're they're all, they're they all support it, yes.
Particularly the Warren.
Yes, sir. Yep. My friend called me yesterday, asking me to do.
And the point is, the next stop right from here is permanent.
We won't have a permanent home, yes, permanent home.
So the Southwest is in front, what can we allocate, put them where?
Uh, Southwest, uh, they they pay rent. Uh, we have additional office space. They just require one single office and I can accommodate them here if needed. Um, there is a room out there if they so, if they want to move, but they they pay rent themselves. So we'll make sure they're taken care of there.
What are we gonna do with that? Perhaps you can.
Uh, that'll be up for discussion. We can bring that up under new business, hopefully. Be a vacant building. Got a motion in a second.
I say I drop through there a lot and I. The recommendations, look at other buildings and if this is a, if this is something that they feel will work, then I I tend to.
So that's not very much. We should consider if you have fifty-five hundred.
All right, no more discussion. I'm gonna ask, uh, Callrope?
Joe Ross.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Randall King.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Blood Stample.
Yes.
Matt Wannas.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Todd Veach.
Yes.
Tony Stigall, yes. Tommy Page.
Yes.
William Carter.
Yes.
Jeff James.
Yes.
All right, um, I'm gonna give you guys an update on the future of the regional airport. Um, I had a meeting last week with the other entities involved. We sat down and agreed that we could agree, um, currently working right now with county attorney on drafting up a new agreement, uh, as to what that would look like. Uh, they, uh, asked me, the other mayor did, about a pro-rata based on population. So, uh, Lena and I are currently drafting that up. Hopefully I have something soon. Uh, very, uh, uh, very good meeting, um, pretty optimistic about, uh, the future there for it. So, uh, just an update on that. Uh, also, an update that's not listed here under old business, uh, we're apparently working, just about done with the salary survey the guy's asking to do. I'll be sending that out for P. A. next month. That'll way we have that in time for the bunch talks when it's time. Okay. Moving on to new business, real quick, I've got, uh, uh, someone asked me to bring up like the Christmas bonus for county employees. You should have a sheet in front of them. And, uh, Ken, and, uh, who wants to take the lead on this?
I'm making a motion. We did the same thing we did last year, all full of part-time county employees. This being the Christmas bonus, not nothing to do with yearly payments as a.
So are you including everybody?
All county employees.
All county employees. All right. You got a second? So, any, any discussion?
You said not to bring up something, but then Sheriff's lawsuit was included.
Well, that's what I was asking about as far as.
But the department head is, need to agree that this is not included in the recital, and so I think that's why Brandon was fine. He's settled that, not a.
Right, this is just a, this is a Christmas bonus, right?
Yes. It's gonna be next year, we might not get one, hopefully we will. I've been here for twelve years, I wouldn't give it one, so. I assume we would, but that's not a guarantee. It's been different.
All right. What's that?
Only three to about three, five hundred dollars.
I think his motion's on the fourth or three with a hundred fifty for part-time?
Yes, just like last year.
Okay. You good, Tommy? Okay. Any other discussion? Callrope?
Jeff James.
Yes.
William Carter.
Yes.
Tommy Page.
Yes.
Tony Stigall, Happy Stample. Todd Veach.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Matt Wannas.
Yes.
Blood Stample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Any other new business?
Yes, the right side's mentioned that some of the individuals in two thousand and twenty and the memorial signed the bridge on Geno and Hopper Springs Road, or Cynthia Cox. I want to discuss that.
For who?
Cynthia Cox, it'll be in the water bridge. They're placed in Mr. John Gray's house on Geno and Hopper Springs area. I believe they talked to Steve, they didn't have a.
I went to school with Cynthia.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of them know she had an accident years ago and involved her life. Right, this is, the bridge is located near Mr. John Gray's farm. Uh, it is a concrete bridge with garden rails, uh, parallel from you. Her sister asked me, came and asked me if I could put up a sign. However, I didn't have a problem putting up a sign, but this is something that they need to come before the commission and have y'all's blessing approve alone before we done and said. And so I asked Miss Stigall to bring it up because the commissioner's supposed to recommend it.
You get a motion?
I'll say. Make a motion, Tom.
On your motion, Terry, second. Any discussion?
What's the cost for?
Two, thirty hundred dollars.
Is it in your budget?
Yes.
Yeah, so no budget amendment or nothing like that.
You should have taken, we, we never.
We can do that.
All right. All right. Being that we all are spending a dollar, over, go ahead and call the rope.
Tommy Page.
Yes.
Tony Stigall.
Yes.
Todd Veach.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Matt Wannas.
Yes.
Blood Stample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yes.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yeah. All right, any more new business? Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, Mayor, we do, uh, talk about what we talked about with, uh, Miles.
Yeah, so, uh, Commissioner James reached out to me, I guess it was yesterday, day before, and, uh, we were talking. Miles Robbins has a homeless shelter that he worked on a bathhouse and things like that, and, uh, uh, he's doing a lot of work in the community. He's running a little bit of low-cost funds to get this thing closed up before the winter, before the winter months come in. And, uh, uh, Commissioner James talked to him and, uh, Miles is about six thousand dollars short of being finished, this bathhouse up, so.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make six thousand dollars.
I'll say. Motion in a second?
I'd like to know if this has been built for the city.
Okay.
If they may, Sheriff, I have to come, would you, uh, would you, when we, when we build the pasture, would you see if you should save the, hey, have to come?
I'll talk to the CD.
I guess that's an unknown, but.
Megan, what would we pull this money out of?
How about some debt?
Okay.
Big part.
Would we have to do, I mean, if we pull that money out, I guess, or we just allocate it? Okay. Make sure we can open that somewhere.
Is the motion being made, Miles, eventually, and that means?
The Shepherd's Houses. You said anything that could be made? That's right.
Homeless Coalition?
Yeah, Homeless Coalition.
Is that a nonprofit?
Yes.
Does that affect, do we have to?
No, they are not a nonprofit yet. They're, they haven't filed the paperwork, so his church, the Shepherd's House is a nonprofit. So that would have to be probably allocated for them.
One question I've got here, if you want to do that, everybody else. That's something President said.
Yep.
I mean, that's a good thing.
I'll quit.
I don't see anybody else still, we drive there on my street, boy. I mean, I don't make that smart. I was, I was gonna do it, but.
Yeah, I might do it. I would be somebody else.
Yeah.
Everything on its own, man.
Yeah. Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Now, the way I understand the motion, make the motion six thousand dollars be to the Shepherd's House. Right?
Yes.
And later on, we have to do a budget review, pull out of the, our, this, undenied, to, uh, to reimburse that. And I'm gonna talk to the CD about splitting this. It's way unfair. Call the rope.
Todd Veach.
Yes.
Aaron Wood.
Yes.
Matt Wannas.
Yes.
Blood Stample.
Yes.
Terry Allen.
Yes.
Randall King.
Yes.
Andy Anderson.
Yes.
Jack Johnson.
Yeah.
Nick Peterson.
Yes.
Joe Ross.
Yeah.
Jeff James.
Yes.
William Carter.
Yes.
Tommy Page.
Yes.
Tony Stigall.
Yes.
All right, one more thing of, uh, interest I want to bring up under new business is, uh, I want to give you guys a, make sure you check your email on November twenty-ninth at six P. M. over at the Watson Center. I've got the Bradley Company coming down from Nashville to do a TIF pilot training. Uh, being that we're a tier-three and four county, the TIF rules, which is a tax incentive finance, uh, used to only apply to business and industry, now applies to residential development. So, uh, what that means is, in a nutshell, is you have a developer who wants to build a seventy-home subdivision with a TIF now that's opened up to this, we're eligible to go in and pay for this infrastructure as a government body, uh, through a loan with the bank, sign with the developer, the taxes on that property each year pay that note off until it's paid off. Um, the only, the training, what it's gonna do is make sure we protect ourselves as a county, because we need to protect the school system. Make sure we're allocating the money back without giving it all to the, back to the TIF. Um, our ECD want to contact, Tracy Excham's gonna be here. I've reached out to all the CD mayors in Henderson County. Uh, C Task, Kelsey Switzer's gonna be here also, some of his wants to contact. I've reached out to Cedar County, invited them to the training. You guys are gonna be asked in the near future to approve the TIF. And I want you guys to be educated as to what you, what it's going on. So this is, this is educating us as a body to understand where the money's going and what's allocated. Uh, there is a development going on, a seventy-home subdivision going on. We got annexed into the city election. The city's gonna do, they're applying for a TIF. They're gonna ask us to sign it. I want you to understand what your assignment is and make sure we take care of our school system as far as the allocation of that money first. I told Mayor Briggs, he can add all the houses he wanted to in the city. I'm fine with it, because he has all the general services. So I want to make sure that the money's taken care of on a county standpoint for our school system. And I know they do want the same thing, but, uh, so I just want you guys to be aware of the importance of this training. Please mark the calendar for it and it it won't be, I'm trying not to be there all night long, but there's gonna be a lot of questions that we're all in the same room, that all the city people and all the county people, that a way we hear the same information, that a way we know we're being told the same thing.
What time is it, Mayor?
Six o'clock. Uh, that's the biggest announcement that we have coming up. Um, one more thing, budget committee before we leave, budget committee, I've got some paperwork for you to sign that's here on this desk. Paperwork catch-up. Uh, any more new business or announcement from the commission? All right. Before I open up the public comments, I can't thank you guys enough for this commission. You guys blow me away. Now, y'all, I told the sheriff when I walked out of the office, I said, let's go make history. You guys have a, you have a novel job. Uh, I'm very proud to be on this board, be be a part of, part of you guys' work, circle on the side. Now, I'm excited about the future of Henderson County. This time we'll open up number sixteen, sixteen point one public comments. Anybody from the public? Don't be shy.
Yeah, I got something. I know.
Come on, man.
We get back, we got a lot of the nine budget thing, but it was supposed to come before the.
Don't mind, state your name for the records report.
Yes, sir. Clint Allen, Henderson County Rescue Squad.
Thank you.
Um, I talked to the budget committee the other night. Um, it was grown up to, uh, uh, go ahead and look at doing our ARPA funding, uh, which was thirty-four thousand, one thirty for a new set of tools and sixty-five thousand dollars for a new truck, uh, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars grand total. Uh, and that should be, I don't know if everybody has that ARPA list or not. I know the budget committee did. Uh, but this stuff is going up, you know, that, on those tools, uh, we're probably looking at a slight increase. I just, there's something that we'd have to eat, uh, but it's going up every day. So I'd like to see if we could go ahead and get that put in place where we could get that spent. We, this new bypass will be opened up soon. I know we'll have the majority of it. The city will have a little section of it, but we will have most of it on the new bypass out there.
On the ARPA money, we're compiling a list. Uh, that's why you don't have it yet, because we're gonna give you guys something to work with. Um, Clint's, he turned everything into us and, um, I don't think the budget committee made any other actual stuff about budgeting, what we talked about tonight. But I know he has a list and, uh, I think we've got a couple of hit this up that we need to be on fairly soon, because every day that goes by, prices go up. All right. Any other comments from the public? All right, saying that, uh, don't forget budget committee, see me after this, and, uh, I'd like to see a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Who made that? Todd, second. I'll say, Andy, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, happy night.